Okay, now being 2 o'clock, I will call the July 22nd, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. The first agenda item was Rick Burnett, Flags on the Green, and he said he was coming. I think we should just go to the second and give him a little time and we'll pick it up later.
I don't know what he needed.
Okay.
I don't know what it was about.
So the next agenda item is Regional Planning Agency, Future Plans and Nominees. You want to lead us on that list?
Sure, so we need to name a new nominee to Old Colony Planning Council. But before we do so, I was wondering if the board would entertain Selectmen Russo and myself to pursue other planning agencies, just to verify that we're getting the most.
And specifically, you're talking about Southeastern?
Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District.
I agree.
I agree.
I'd be glad to go to the Old Colony Planning just to have a representative for the first one. I don't want to be on it, but...
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want us to...
While you're looking at the other ones.
So then could you do that, could we set that in the form of a vote then to name you temporarily as the OCPC nominee?
You want to make a motion, Mr. Russo?
I'm motioning that you would be the nominee.
Yes.
Yes, temporarily.
All right, so I make a motion that Chairman Traynor be appointed as the interim nominee to the Old Colony Council on Aging.
Ah, it's Planning Council.
A Planning Council, yes.
Planning Council, I'm sorry, thank you.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So I'll just go and see what the first one is.
Okay, and then in the meantime, Mark and I have authorization to pursue some other options.
Yep.
Which of course isn't that Old Colony hasn't, hasn't worked for us, it's just that we're such a small town, we don't have a planner, there are so many things we don't have. We just want the opportunity to get as much as we can out of whichever organization we go with.
Yep.
Did you want to vote on that?
I don't think we need to.
No, I think we're okay. The next agenda item is the MBTA Advisory Committee nominee selection. So...
This one Christine was filling in this capacity. It's not a heavy lift, but we do need to name somebody to it.
I'm, I'm willing to do that. To be clear, I hate the legislation and at the same time, we have to be very, very careful. That's where I'm coming from.
How do you feel, Dan?
I feel that Mark can take that, that's fine.
Sorry.
I don't have any opposition to you taking it on, Mark.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion on that list?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Mark Russo be nominated to the MBTA Advisory Committee as our nominee replacing Christine Joy. Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is Lisa joining us or are you going to...
No, I have all the stuff.
So we're going to do a review and approval of the FY '24 closeout line items. These are the transfers for the financial...
Yep, so these are the standard transfers. So we have the final ones from the final quarter of fiscal '24. And then these are the ones that ultimately the Finance Committee is going to be signing off for. These are just all the line-to-line transfers necessary to balance at the end of the year. So say for example, somebody, I don't know, used more out of one expense category, but then they had a little extra in another. So those are all of the closeout transactions.
So Lisa's good with these, you're comfortable with them?
Yes.
Can this close these?
This will close the books for fiscal '24.
Okay. I'll sign these after you've had a chance to look at them. We do this every year, I mean it's housekeeping basically.
Right.
Are we doing a Council on Aging update?
Yes, and I hope she comes with the five minutes or less version because I saw her email.
I want her to present every single word that she put in the report in five minutes or less.
The report was really helpful though.
It was very good.
That was a nice snapshot, it was very well done.
Very good.
So you guys can just sign both of those sheets. I think on the smaller print one, there's a spot for Selectmen, yes.
Just to extend that discussion, we don't want to make more work for our department heads, but a report like that quarterly or something is really good.
Very helpful, right?
Yeah.
She is, the Town Properties Committee, you read it, they're minutes, and it's like being there.
It is.
And it's just amazing.
Want me to take that?
And I think she's coming now.
Looks like it.
This one you can pass to Bree.
You're up.
This is going to Bree.
One is for you, this one's not ready yet, I need finance.
So we have a departmental update on Council on Aging?
Well, I sent you the book.
We were just discussing that.
Okay, so overall, COA is doing well, we're within our budget, we offer luncheons and activities. Luncheons are every other month starting in February, activities are when they rise. Try to get something in the alternate month, but that doesn't always happen. For the food pantry, we serve basically about 30 people, those are repeat people, it's not 30 individuals. 18 households, which I think is a good number for Plimpton. I haven't had any issues obtaining food, we don't restrict the use of the pantry. I suspect there are some people that don't have a financial need that use it, but if somebody tells me they want some food, they can have food, it's not that big a deal. The Friends of the COA, which is a 401(c)(3) group in place to help the COA programs and activities, is up to date on all of their paperwork. The previous version had lapsed and it took a while to get it cleaned up and reinstated, but that's been done. Newsletter is monthly, I try to make it informative and fun and helpful. Coming up activities, we have a cookout at the COA, I mean, I'm sorry, this is the COA, at the Upland Club on August 21st. The Upland Club basically donates, it's a gift to us, although I do give them some money back to help offset the cost of the food, because they give us good food and it can be expensive.
Is that just Plimpton or is that a triad?
This is just Plimpton. Yeah, the triad had a luau in June and that was their summer cookout. Health and wellness, all of the groups seem to be doing well and attendance has grown enough that yoga added the second class, people have asked for it. We had a little bit of a, we had a need to upgrade or up, lower, lower the temperature on the air conditioner, but Bree was able to take care of that for us. Bree is very helpful to us. Let's see, we'll continue to offer the health clinics and the health education sessions. Unfortunately, Nurse Pat, who we've really grown to love and appreciate, is leaving. She has some health issues of her own that she needs to deal with. They are hiring, supposedly they've hired somebody and it just takes months for Plymouth to get a new employee onboard, so she'll be here until that person is in place and will stay with her or him to aid continually get her set. The biggest thing, I think, is getting our new driver in place. And Liz and I have talked about it and once the end of year stuff is all done, we'll work on getting somebody. I'm really hoping that we can find somebody who's already certified. Otherwise, it's over 40 hours, I thought I'll do it, it's like, that's like four weeks of hours. And you have to travel in some cases around the state to get the first aid because it's out in, you know, backwater creeks somewhere.
So we don't have anybody in the, in the pipeline that we know of?
I have somebody in mind who currently works for Kingston. I don't know if we will offer her enough hours or enough money to make it worth her while to leave Kingston, or if she just wants to cut back there and pick up some stuff here. Liz and I have to get together, figure out the rate per hour, you know, we put something in the budget, but... Yeah, we have to do the nitty gritty.
Do we think Gatra will go along with paying for that?
We're going to keep Gatra. So, so I hope that people will use Gatra as much as possible for the places that Gatra does go. This person will be the extra trips, you know, the half mile beyond Shaw's that Gatra will take them to, the new doctor who's not at exit 10, but is at exit, you know, 11 or something.
And the people at the retreat lots that, for mobility issues.
So, okay, so that's how we'll handle the retreat lots then?
Yes, Gatra's had some issues with retreat lots. There was one, somebody called me, Gatra told them that she, they couldn't go down her driveway because there was ice on it, so I went to give her a ride and the ice was like just barely a sheen and it was 45 degrees out, it was like, there's no ice problem here, but they would not go down the driveway, they're very cautious with their vans. But, you know, we've been able to pick up the slack and when they've told somebody that they no longer go here or there, I've called them and said, "Yes, you do," and they said, "Okay, we will," so that's worked. So the driver will be fewer hours than Jim was. Jim was salaried at 30 hours a week, it was just way too much and not, not a good way to control it. So we will do this differently.
Great, sounds good.
And I think, other than having a new board member in Debbie Batson, that pretty much kind of sums up. If you have questions?
Just a comment, yes, and 401(c)(3) is active again, I'd hate to lose that because it costs a lot to get back in. Moreover, I think you guys along with the Historical Society are ripe sooner or later for a major donation and I think dropping that hint every once in a while and planting that seed, sooner or later, someone's going to recognize their frailty and their age and have some wherewithal and what better way to support the town if they've enjoyed their whole lives?
And I do actually have one other comment, I wrote it in the report that I sent to you. I do, I do want to mention that the church is very supportive of the COA. You know, we, we have a rental agreement, so if you came and wanted to rent the church, we'd charge you, but we do not charge the COA. All those luncheons, you know, eating the room in February, all that, it's, there's no charge.
That's been great.
I think we're never formally appointing Deb Batson, so would you like us to do that at an upcoming?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I didn't...
I can put it on for August 5th. I was just thinking of it when you mentioned it.
So, yes, please.
Okay, we'll, we'll take care of that retroactively, we'll look up the date that she was sworn in.
It was, um, the second or third Tuesday in June, so...
Okay, I can get that from Tara and we'll put that on the next agenda. The COA board.
Really sorry to see Pat, I am afraid he's leaving, she's really made a contribution here and people like her, you know.
Yes, and she really likes Plimpton, she, like, if...
Was it only for personal reasons or were there any other reasons?
Yes, actually, had there been other reasons, she would have continued with Plimpton because she likes us though.
Okay. She entertain anything ultra-part-time just for Plimpton COA, like working under the direction of the COA?
She has some, some health issues and her husband has health issues and, you know, she's retired from full-time nursing and it just means that she wants to step back for a while.
Right, I was just wondering, because we do have some flexibility in your budget as far as Jim's hours and what we use for a part-time driver.
Yeah, I can talk to her on Wednesday.
I would mention it if she'd be interested in working like under your direction for COA very part-time.
And maybe she would like to continue doing the health ed sessions under us and use the clinic as a support.
Got used to her and developed a relationship with her.
Yeah, I'll ask her.
Great.
She is, she is.
Thanks for the update. We'd be in total control. We value it. I think we'll jump back to the flag issue since Rick's joined us. We could have you down here for Flags on the Town Green.
I'm here, I don't know why, but I'm here. So I hear you folks are in charge of the flags.
I thought you asked to be on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did.
Okay.
But the flags are in disrepair. I hear that you guys are basically in charge of the flags, so they need to be, they need to be fixed, they need to be repaired. There's five in disrepair between my house and here.
Some of them are hung up, but there's a couple that are, there's one in front of the house that's just torn to shreds. It's just, and another one is just hanging by a thread. Some of them look heavy-duty flags and some look like they're less...
I mean, they're very expensive and Rob can attest to that. It's, we spent a small fortune on them and then we opted to have them up like Memorial Day through, I think we said May 1st through November 30th, so that they'd be up through Veterans Day.
So the question is, one of the problems we have is the only way we can get to these flags is to have Gary Thompson with his machine, the bucket, that can reach them so that we can either take them down and replace them or just get them so that they're unhinged, unhitched. If we, and Gary always is willing to come forward, but he's got a business to run, so it may be a week or two before he gets to it. And it doesn't look, you know, it's not right. The question is, do we keep going forward with the flags? I mean, I was one of the ones proponent to get them up, I'd still like to see them up. I looked at Kingston again. Originally, when I looked at Kingston, I said, "That's the model we should follow." It looks like they have smaller flags, they're certainly smaller than what we're flying. Halifax has taken a different approach. If you go over there, you'll see, they put them in a, it's not a flag, it's a box that's attached to the pole, so it can't swing, but it's pictures of veterans, people who are in the military.
They set up like a banner style with two poles.
Yeah, and maybe that's something we should consider and use flags in that sense. I, I guess I'm looking for input on what people feel.
Can I say, I'm in Memorial Day, so I think that it would be great to have them up for Memorial Day and after, maybe the 4th of July, because it does, thanks for the holiday, and we take them down after the 4th. I did speak to the Veterans Agent, she said as long as, like, that flag day would fall in that period, and she said for Veterans Day, as long as our main flags are flying, that is what she's concerned about, which would be the one in the green, one here at our building.
It's one at 106, too, right?
On 106, we're a little, we have someone else taking care of the 106 one.
Right, but we spent a lot having that pole refurbished.
And we do have one on the other side of, by the police station, and Robbie kind of fixed that a little bit last time. But she said as long as our main flags are flying, she is happy with that. That was from Roxanne, went back.
Is there a way that we can reach the flags to unhitch them?
I have an extension ladder in the back of my truck, I was going to try and do that before I got here today and I didn't get the chance, so that'll be fresh on my list tomorrow. I'm going to try to see if I can just get them down.
It is expensive, Gary, and it does us a favor, maybe slide one free and then we pay for the rest, Robbie's been picking up down to have, I ordered 10 poles and what were we at, nine flags, I believe?
I've had a number of people come to me and say how much they like it.
It is, it looks beautiful, it's just, it's the wear and tear with the tractor trailer trucks coming through town and the...
That's another issue, is can we, should they be at a different height?
If you go higher, it's going to get caught in the line.
I was thinking lower.
If you go lower, it's going to be like two, the one down by Bird's House on Main Street, they actually get clipped by a tractor trailer.
So why don't we take that one down?
We can.
Any that, that susceptible, we should just not have a flag there.
Even in the center of town, I mean, from the white line to the telephone pole, there's only probably a far, so if you have somebody scooching over in a big truck, they could, could get one.
I'd be concerned, to be honest here, not to overstep, but I'd be concerned about just like line of sight, if they were too low, like to your point, so.
I'm just thinking the ones on the green that are back a ways, they're not going to be clipped. We don't need the flags going all the way down to the stores and all the way down beyond here.
Take green to the town hall or something.
Yeah.
Inside of the green there.
Yeah. But again, if they get hitched, we got to be able to get them down.
The banner style would probably be your best long term because they're kind of pinned there. Granted, the sun's still going to fade them, multiviolet, the weather's going to destroy them, but at least they can't blow in the wind and get caught on the lines and just in general, colorblind.
I like the idea of the veteran banners myself, I think that actually gives you the real, the town ownership to, you know, moving, obviously we have flags throughout the town, but as was mentioned, there's only been one that's been hit by a truck and then if you're keeping up with them, but if you did have a rotating schedule where you only had a Memorial Day to July, I mean, another thing is, is that by flag code, they're supposed to be lit too, so if they're off on a side street where there's no light, technically it goes against the flag code on top of everything else. But that veteran thing, it definitely adds a personal thing, you know?
Where are you at?
Unfortunate we're having the problem, I, I don't have any strong preference to the solutions we've heard, just would like to do something.
It's the second year that we've replaced flags. We did it the year before and then we adjusted it for Memorial Day this year again.
And do you know roughly what kind of money we're talking?
Well, each kit was $24.
Each what?
Kit, just you get the flag, because it just, not the flag, not the pole.
Just the pole and the mechanism for it.
The mechanism to it, and then we're paying about $16 to $20 per flag.
So say $50 per flag, there are 10 flags?
No, it's more than that.
Well, I didn't, but I didn't have to replace as many.
Yeah, there's more than that, I want to say there's maybe 14 or 15, maybe?
So 16...
But we don't have to have 15 flags, we could have 10 or something less.
Yeah, but the big flags are...
The big flags can be like hundreds depending on...
I mean, my take is people are pretty dedicated to that stuff and if it's $1,000 we're looking at it, again, we want to be frugal.
I only have a $600 Memorial Day budget.
Yeah, but wouldn't it paid out of Roxanne's veterans budget the first time?
No, I pay her.
The first time?
She supplemented the cost for some, but not all, she didn't have enough to cover all of the flags.
So this year I paid for them all?
This year she did that because Roxanne was working on a different project for one of the veterans with like a housing need.
Okay, okay.
What if we had a town meeting article on what the citizens decide whether they want to be frugal there?
We could fund it by article every year, then at least people could see what it's for.
And what their tax dollars go for.
I think it's, yeah, but we still got the problem of solving, how do we make sure that they're always flying, you know, the right way?
I know that it's nicely, it's nice to have them hanging over the street, but could we put them on the side of the pole so that the pole is not sticking out in the street, getting broken by a truck going by?
You'd have to put them on the backside of the pole, if you put them under the wires, now the raise is going to be low enough, you might have somebody come over and want to pick a truck chain with that a bit and pop it up. And stuff like that does happen.
So we need to keep them as high as they are?
Yeah.
So you're taking them down for now?
I was going to take down the broken ones for now.
Okay, if you could take down any in disrepair. I would say to take any that are in disrepair.
I would too, but I would take the ones that go down to the Bird's House.
Yeah.
There's never the intent to go beyond the cemetery.
End of the driveway, pull them all out from the cemetery down towards...
I think there's three of them out there.
Yeah.
And those would fill in for the ones that we take down.
Yes.
But we still got the ones that are torn, whether that should even have a flag. There's the one by the lights, by Rick's house.
Yeah.
It's all torn up.
Yeah, I think that was just probably one of the original flags or something, I don't think there's anything really to catch on to down by your houses, is there?
No, it's just a ghost.
Yeah. A few more poles down towards like the gazebo, they, they put up the, oh, I'm having a terrible time talking, the fiber optics, they get some ties, they didn't tie so nice and the flag blows up and actually hooks on the top, it's like a metal wire that they just twist a whole bit.
Can we take them down for now, look at what's good, look at what's bad?
And then come up with a plan before Veterans Day? I think that makes the most sense, I would just take all of them down and then we can look at everything, our inventory, what it would cost to replace, what it would cost to convert to a banner system, and then we'll have something in place for Veterans Day.
I'd rather see them flying, but if you guys want to go that route, you can make a motion.
Because you originally wanted them to go all the way down to the historical, the old townhouse?
I did, but I wanted them every other pole. And I didn't want them to go beyond the lights, so I had a count of 13 at the time and that was just based on Kingston, the way they did it.
We're not every pole now.
You're on every pole.
Are we on every pole now?
Yeah.
And then we did extend over to the, to kind of incorporate us all together.
Yeah, but if you guys, what would you do?
Do you want me to look into what banners are?
Yeah, why don't you look into that and why doesn't Rob take down all the stuff for now and then we can get a proper inventory?
Take them all down?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, I can do that.
Well, let's have a motion because I want to vote against it.
You can tell me what we need, like I'll look at the cost.
Yeah.
I think I want to vote against it too, so I don't want to make the motion and I, I'm...
So you want all of, even the...
Take down the ones that need to be repaired.
Okay.
Step one.
Take the ones from the cemetery to the Bird's House, which are three.
Yeah.
Use those in place of the ones that are being repaired.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Get the one down that's ripped and just make sure that, in fact, if we put another one up, it's, there's not something inherently bad there, yeah.
So then can I amend your motion that...
I don't have a motion, I'm just...
Okay, amend your suggestion, I'm not even sure we need to vote on it, that we do all that and we begin to explore what the cost would be for a banner, what the cost would be to replace them, aiming toward a town meeting article next spring to fund a new way to do this.
It's fine, yeah, I like that.
No problem with that.
Because right now, this is going to cost us to pay Gary to come and do what you want to do, and then when I come back in November, I want to pay him again to take the, whatever left, down.
That's right.
Now just getting the cost, it's like...
And at the same time, though, we'll get rid of the ones that are destroyed, we'll, we'll preserve the ones that are still okay and it'll give us a little time to figure this out.
Right.
So, I don't know if we need a motion, do you want a motion on that?
I don't think so, I think we can just, yeah.
Please do it.
Do you want the five from Mayflower to the end of Youngstown?
From where to where?
From Mayflower to the other end, the convenience store, there's like five new ones that are across from the convenience store, post office.
My perspective, when we first talked, it was not going to go beyond the traffic lights, so I'm not sure why those are...
I can take those ones because those are the new ones and I can put them into the other ones that should be able to serve. other ones that should be out of service.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking.
I think also we should do some reaching out to people in town, get some feedback.
Oh, I will utterly agree with that.
Yeah. So I guess we'll have to do it one-on-one, because, you know, you can bring it up at a library meeting, if you're talking to people.
Well, I really like the thing funded by town meeting, and I mean that, we'll have a robust discussion on this one.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
Okay. Okay?
Okay.
Sounds good.
This is Rick's fault.
No, no, it's, it's...
It's a respect, but there's ethics that need to be followed, and we don't follow them, even have them all repaired. They need to be lighted at night, there's a whole lot to it. I'll put up with not having that part, to have them flying correctly. And I think anybody else in town would feel the same way. And time goes on, another week, another week, and nothing's done, so I've just stopped in here one day and found out who's in charge. So here I am.
Hope we're in charge, but we are here. All right, good. Rob, you'll handle that? Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Matt, did you wanna talk? I'm sorry. No? Okay.
See you, guys.
Matt, I guess you're up. Police Department update.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you for everyone's time. So I got a little bit of a list of some things that we were working on, just some general updates. So I'll start with like school resource officer. So they have successfully integrated a garden club down at the school. Peter Vannuto at the school welcomed that, and my school resource officer team has executed, put plantings out there, and got the students involved in that program, which has been great. It's really gonna, it was kind of a, in beta, so to speak, for the end of the school year, but we're gonna be able to really, you know, hone in on that program come the first of the school year. Dare campus this week, so again, school resource officer team is up at Woodman Hansen, starting actually as of today. That, that, that program runs until Friday, where we have students there that'll be graduating, or they're for the graduation.
How many towns are in that, Matt?
So I think the letter that I just received, actually, I opened it this afternoon, there's six hundred students that are in that program this week. It's a lot. Obviously, Dana Smith was involved with that. I also wanna give a shout out to him for affording us the bus that you set up, that first student there, and speaking with Peter Vannuto about that, so that's a huge help so the kids are able to get there safely this week. So that'll wrap up on Friday. I'll be there for the graduation. So good things going on with the school resource officer. Accreditation, we just heard back from the accreditation board. We got through the first step of accreditation, which is fantastic. I give a shout out to Office D. Nicola, Sergeant Valente in Office of Fitzgerald for helping out with that team there, effort to get us to the standards, to be able to submit that for accreditation. That's, it's just, it's a big step for us, and now we start doing different things around the station to kinda make sure that we maintain that, have an in-person visit with them. So that's a big first step for that. Grants, we've been working on a ton of different grants. Recently appropriated about a few hundred thousand dollars for Bearcat acquisition for a regional asset team, Semlek. Semlek SWAT was able to facilitate that for Semlek SWAT. We have two Bearcats, which is basically armored vehicles to appropriate back into that unit. So that was good. I worked on that through our Semlek partnership, Southeastern Mass Law and Leadership Council, to which we're a member of. So that was great. We also internally acquired through Semlek, we got an ATV, which is good, so now we can actually have an ATV that can go over the power lines, do some police general search areas if we have long retreat lots, someone may mention earlier, or somebody that's lost out on the power lines, or things that we have, any activities that we have to kinda mitigate out on the power line, or far out in the woods. We now have ATV that's gonna be afforded to us. We have to pick that up, I think, next week. So, so that's good. Again, we just recently applied for the MRS grant, which is affording us a ton of opportunity to do traffic mitigation, traffic studies, handheld device, speeding, distracted driving campaigns. Hopefully, we will hear back. I'd say usually that process, a few months of review. We should hear something back in September on that, if we got afforded that. Historically, we've done very well with that one particular grant, and actually, I had a message from them, they wanna come back down and speak with me in regards to the success that we've had with that, so the state will be coming down and meeting with them pretty soon. I just don't have a date on that. Again, Serphead, they've been fantastic with us with some grant opportunities. I know the town's kinda opening up some dialogue from Old Colony and Serphead, that's really good success, and again, some of the grants that we recently acquired through Semlek, through them, Semlek chiefs have kinda put me as a point of contact for a lot of acquisitions and some of the financing through them.
Probably because there may be other people watching, you should explain some of the, what the acronyms mean.
Sure, yeah, yeah. So Serphead, Southeastern Regional Planning Economic Development. So they're based out of Taunton, they're basically the conduit through potland, homeland security for federal funding. So it's a pretty robust program. Again, when we acquired through Poltech, we acquired two Bearcats for Semlek SWAT. It's the SWAT unit there. We put together a plan of about two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-plus-or-minus dollars to acquire these and upfit them for members of our team that are Plimpton police officers, and then the regional asset, so they can use those Bearcats.
Where are those kept?
So we actually just signed a lease over in Carver, so they'll be kept there, as well as our mobile command unit that I run for Semlek. That's gonna be housed over in Carver as well.
Good.
So, so I've been busy with like a lot of like the, the LEC teams, the Semlek teams, and some of the different specialized units, because we have some affordability with some of our officers that are members of that. So it's good, keeps them engaged, keeps them involved, and surround is good networking for my officers. Also helps keep them very well engaged in, in what we do, and just gives them opportunities that they weren't gonna have otherwise. Again, when I stepped into this position three years ago, the biggest thing was combat attrition. I think we've done that very well by having these lights at the end of tunnel for these officers, so I commend everybody here on the board for giving me that opportunity. So another part of Semlek is I run a multi-agency unit for civil disturbance. It's unfortunate that we're here in this climate, based on what's going on politically and around the world, whether you're far left or far right, but what we found is that in this immediate southeast mass area is that there's a need to create a unit around rioting and protesting. I think from what I gather, and I used, afforded the opportunity by my colleagues and surrounding chiefs, giving me the opportunity to be part of running this unit, a lot of it had to come down with the way that I handled Cisco. And I appreciate that opportunity, but I got involved in obviously a lot of the back-and-forth with, you know, Cisco, the strike, Team Service Legal, so they put me in a position to help run and field this unit. With that being said, I have about fifty or so members in Southeastern Mass that are on this unit, and what I recently have done is as of last week, we know we're gonna have medics that we need for this unit. So what I've done is I reached out to Chief Duddy and Captain Gonzalez, they're actually, they're gonna be my medics on this unit. So again, a lot of that cross, kinda bringing some of the, our assets here in town, that I know, you know, they're both fantastic to help augment what I need for the medical side of it, so they're gonna be a part of that regional team as well. So they're both very excited, they're both putting their applications with me, so they're gonna be a part of this unit as well. Again, it's a very weird, fine line of like, it's great that we have this unit, but it's unfortunate that we have to have this unit based on the climate of what's going on in the world around us. In more uplifting news, we have National Light Out coming up, which is exciting, so this'll be our third annual, I believe, August sixteenth, from five to eight. Similar to what we've done in the past, we're gonna have food entity, we're gonna have a dump tank, we're gonna have demos, touch truck, fire department's gonna go all out, the same thing, touch truck, and they're gonna be cooking as well. We have a lot of town departments that are gonna be involved, Plimpton Pays, I think COA, I believe, is gonna set up a table, Historical, I believe, is gonna set up a table as well. So we have a lot of people that wanna be a part of it this year, DeeDee's office and a few other.
They're also gonna bring the hearse up and have it as a display.
Sure, yeah.
And Rob's gonna take care of that.
Don't put it next to the COA table.
In between the Historical Society and the COA?
Noted. So, yeah, so we're very excited about that. Again, as we have third annual, we're bringing in a hayride. The Sheriff's Department's gonna afford us a hayride to be able, you know, what we gotta figure out is, because I know there's some repair work going on up in the fields, what kind of track do we create for people to come, jump on, like, you know, a three, four, five-minute hayride, just kinda take them through some of the back areas around here? I gotta figure out the logistics on that, but then, we, again, we have a lot of regional assets coming in, state police, Plymouth County, local departments coming in. So it'll be good, it'd be good. Mike Slosson, again, I can't say enough about Mike, the librarian director. He's done a fantastic job again this year, kinda helping me, you know, get the ball rolling again, and he's got a lot of good things coming, and face painting, and balloons, and there's just so many things that we're adding this year. Again, we'll have a raffle table and...
A lot on your plate.
A little bit, yeah, a little bit. But it's all good stuff. It's, it's funny how everything seems to come to like a head all at once, but we're, we're getting there. It's, it's good. Again, National Light Out for me, I mean, I'm very much community, so this is my favorite event of the year, so I can't wait to get this thing going. And the last thing is, I'll touch upon this, was I spoke with the board and members of the community, I believe it was last year or so, and we did a multi-town clinician program. So we had a clinician that was a part of the Plimpton Police Department. Unfortunately, that was, that was owned by Carver Police Department, they did a great job getting it off the ground running, but what we found is that the parent company that was providing that service to us just wasn't giving us the, wasn't giving us or the clinician the right information, it didn't seem to work out that program, but what we've done recently is I just spoke with the Kingston Police Chief, as well as us connecting with the Halifax Police Department, Halifax Chief, is we're now gonna be switching and moving over to a Civil League Regional Clinician, which is gonna be that, that group, or however many members of the clinician program, is gonna be owned by the Kingston Police Department. So they're gonna own that program, and we're gonna figure out...
So what is exactly a clinician do?
So what that is, is again, when we created this about a year or so ago, it was, it was for mental health calls. You know, calls that would constitute, again, a domestic call, children involved, to help, again, mitigate. So what the state, you know, is really seeing is should I have a buffer between us and community on some of the worst calls that we go to, again, mental health, and anything that would constitute, just have, talk to somebody about some resources, domestics, things, you know, such as that, so. So again, what we're bringing now is a new program, which is gonna be owned by the Kingston Police Department. We're gonna be a part of that. We've kinda seared away from what's gone on over in Carver. They gave us, paid pretty much the, it's not gonna continue on with us, feel free to go out and market yourselves to another program, which again, now it's, it's good, because it still falls into Civil League Regional, it's gonna be owned by Kingston Police. So again, there's a domestic issue, something involving children, school, I mean, we can actually send a clinician out, and there's reciprocity between each one of our departments. So if we own the clinician one day, and that male or female's working at our department, we have a place for them to work out of. If Halifax calls and they need that clinician, then we bring them over to Halifax, or we meet up with the town line, and they take them to whatever call that they need. If Kingston needs the clinician back, we bring him to the town line, they receive that clinician and bring them to that set call. The same thing, if we ever need them at the worst, we bring them over back over to our community. So, and they can do, you know, sections and things like that, that kinda takes away the ownership of the police officer, gives us a little bit more solid ground to stand on. That was a lot. Any questions from anybody?
Good, good.
Great.
Again, you got a lot on your plate.
Thank you.
Good. Any questions?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're onto warrants paid.
Hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight.
Must be some big ones in that.
Insurance is due. It's the, oh, first and the best one here, excuse me.
Are they paid? Is that one bill per year? We're spread out.
No, we pay one. But that's not just a hundred and forty of insurance. That's a little bit, but, so you have your workers' comp, two workers' comps for the employees, and then police and fire have workers' comp, and we have liability insurance.
Okay.
That's up.
Town administrator update.
Been busy working on all the year-end closeout type of activities, and also closing out some different grants, and ensuring that any state budget earmarks that we've fully put in for and exhausted those. So I think after this week, we should be good as far as closing the chapter on fiscal twenty-four, and Grady from Lynch &amp; Marini is geared up to begin the audit early September.
Okay. How long's he usually here for when he does that?
It's on and off. Sometimes he'll be here for maybe, I don't know, three weeks at a time, and then we might not see him for a while. He's in and out during it.
So they do a management reporting audit, and I think we ought to have them come in...
Yeah.
And just walk us through, you know...
We can do that.
What they've seen, I think it's worthwhile.
Maybe we can get that in while we have the meetings at 2:00 PM, so that we're not paying a premium to have him come out in, in the evening.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And also along those lines, I've spoken with General Labor Council, not Labor Council, I'm sorry, General Counsel Greg Corbo, and he's gonna come in to our meeting on the nineteenth of August. Again, he was appreciative of the 2:00 PM start time.
Yeah.
And he's going to give us a litigation update.
Good.
Just so that you're up to speed, because I know that...
Is that in executive session or open session?
Um, I have to check with him first and figure out what type of information he wants to give. I'm assuming it'll be an executive session, but I just wanna verify that, and I'm gonna need the info from him anyway for the meeting posting, because it's to discuss several pieces of litigation. It's a board of health matter, at least one, and I believe two conservation commission matters that are still ongoing.
Especially with the new selection, I think we need to be in executive session, so...
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, just so that if Dana has any questions, that, that he can ask that.
Good, that sounds good.
Some more to come on that. We have in correspondence a letter to the board from Kathy Ferguson, dated July seventeenth, I'm just going to hit the high points, if that's okay, and then leave this in the office for you, if you want to read it in its entirety, or do you want me to read it in its entirety?
Have we seen it before?
Um, I don't believe so, unless you've seen it at the office.
Do the high points.
Okay. I viewed your meeting held on July 8th, 2024, there were two subjects upon which I would like to comment. First, regarding the townwide ban on alcohol on town property, there is absolutely no reason to revisit this decision. The town is not in the entertainment business. And then it references-
Is this from her as the administrative assistant?
No, no, this is her as a resident of the town.
Okay.
She signed it with her home address. Second, regarding using the old townhouse as a venue open to the public. She expresses concerns about the old townhouse, and apparently it's on a cesspool-style septic system. So she has concerns about that, and if the building was being used too much, this could tax the fragile condition of the septic system. The cost to add an appropriate septic system and to become a public water supply to facilitate use by the public is short-sighted and expensive. The building does not have adequate parking, lighting, or onsite supervisory personnel. Then she references the historic value of the building itself. Preserving historical buildings is the responsibility of the town, the building does not need to earn its keep. There are currently appropriate uses for the building, including using the space for committees to meet when townhouse conference rooms are booked, and permitting groups like yoga, youth groups, et cetera, to continue using the space. And then she points out that we do have a use of town property form and a protocol established to utilize town property. Raising awareness about what activities are permitted at the old townhouse or on town property would be an appropriate way to move forward. I hope you reconsider both of these issues. And that we should vet these types of decisions before discussing the ideas in a public forum.
Well, I disagree with that, I mean-
So I'm gonna pass this down, and Bree can keep that in the office if you want to-
So if there are concerns, we'll address them, yes ma'am?
I'm sorry, need to turn in. Just sitting here in person with you people, it's like if people are just doing conversations and not responding to us, is there a reason why you don't use your microphones?
The microphones are for the recording.
But, but, I'm sorry-
You can't hear us?
I'm a citizen, and, you know, I look forward to coming, but I don't, I'm not enjoying just having you people just chat among yourselves, regardless of what the issues of the businesses are. I just think it's kind of, in my total, bluntly, a slight personally, that's all.
So the recording, the speakers are for the recording, but we have talked about, and we need to move forward, because other people have indicated what you feel, and I think we've got to solve it, so it's gotta become a priority.
Thank you, I'm sorry, it's just-
No, no, it's good feedback.
Being a wise ass, I trust you.
And in fact, the last meeting was all about our projects and priorities, and I think we listed that as a high priority. One with very old ears that really couldn't even hear all that you said. I totally agree with you.
Then why, the next meeting, why wouldn't you, are you planning on using the microphone?
So these don't amplify.
Okay, then-
All they're for is for the gentlemen in the back for the Area 58 recording, so they don't project. So we're looking into purchasing perhaps microphones that would amplify appropriately. And speakers as well.
I just think that would be helpful.
Agreed. Agreed.
Because when I watch on Area 58 or YouTube, I've got the volume at a thousand decibels, you know, so that I can hear.
Okay.
Even still, even just talking. In past meetings, it's still very hard to hear, whether it's on YouTube or whether it's bullhorn or whatever, you know, it's just very difficult to hear, so. I'll, that's it.
Yep, well noted.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody.
Back to the letter from Mrs. Ferguson, there's some things, I think, as a private resident, she certainly can raise them. I think the use of the townhouse, it's owned by the people, and I think we need to have as much going on there as possible. But she raises some points, and I think we need to discuss them, and that's for another meeting. And maybe do some homework before we-
Do you wanna put it on for the August 5th? Or August 19th?
No, I think we need to do some more homework, I think the septic system is something. We don't have a lot of people using the building, really. When you look at, you know, and most of them know that, at least the fitness crowd knows that you bring your own water, and you, if you have to use the facilities, you use them at home before you come. I'm not sure about yoga and meditation. One of the things that has come up with the finance committee is, you know, if the building isn't used widely, then why do we continue it? And I think that's another avenue. My own feeling is, it's a beautiful building, 1850, we gotta figure out how to maybe have people use it. But if there's things that we need to do to make it safer, or, then we need to do that, too.
I think maybe it raises at least the consideration of turning that into some income along the way, a profit center. I'm not at all sure that's a good idea, but it is an idea that maybe makes it worthwhile. And I think we have to write down what the policy is. I think I'm still, even though we've discussed it many times, not clear on private groups and which ones we use, which ones we don't, who's making those decisions, who doesn't want to. So I think it should go on the agenda, I think maybe we need a month or six weeks, maybe to draft the document that we can work off of, and then move forward.
My feeling is that I think there are valid concerns if you're gonna open it up to being utilized by more people. The parking, as I mentioned the last meeting we had, lighting for the parking, it needs to be plowed, I'm not sure when that would get done, I would bow to rob on that. Also, as far as the septic system, you can't expect if you're gonna have activities there that that is gonna be just, okay, well, you went to the bathroom before you got here, and afterwards, I mean. So I think there's some valid concerns, if it moves forward in such a manner as to be utilized by the public, private, or otherwise. Because once you expand the use of it, it's gonna also expand the other issues with it, so.
So you-
Definitely need to be more looked into, I think.
Okay. Let's go forward with looking into it, and put it on agenda six to eight weeks out.
Okay.
Correspondents, anything else?
No.
That's it? Okay. The minutes from July 8th, that they look good?
Look good.
So make a motion that we approve the minutes as written, of July 8th, 2024?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Selectmen's raves, unless somebody's got something with them? Got a rave?
Oh, raves. Meetings ending before my bedtime.
It is nice, I'm liking this. I have a rave, it's kind of, nothing to do with Plimpton in one sense, but for people who don't go, or don't know about it, Plymouth sponsors a waterfront concert every Wednesday night, and it's free. And they have some really good groups, and you bring a picnic, and you bring your chair, and, or blanket. So the, last week was Chicago, a tribute band to Chicago. This week is a tribute band to Aerosmith, and they've all been good. Been going for a number of years, so, if you're not aware, try it. Everybody?
I'm good.
Okay. So, that closes the open meeting. So we will be moving into executive session. We will not be returning to open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session. So I make a motion that we do a roll call vote to enter executive session. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Trainor, yes. So we're now in executive session. Thank you all for coming.